October eleventh.
Oh, cut out.
Order the first Arts Commission.
There she is. There they are.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Happy, happy, happy to be here. It's nice to see all of you.
Nice to see you, Honorable Counsel.
Nice to see you.
And Mr. Mayor. You're on mute, Mr. Mayor.
We seem to have a pretty healthy turnout from the Arts Commission here. I see Lua Pritchard, Earl Borgert, Lanny Neal, Sylvian Johnson, Susan Warner, Paige Hanson, Lynda McDermott. I think that I mentioned everybody who's here. So this is our, and Mary Moss has managed to join us. I didn't see Mary earlier. Hi. So, uh, thank you for all you do. I'll thank you again at the end, I'm sure, but uh, we'd like to hear what your plan is for the year and then we may have some questions for you and you can have questions for us. So who's going to take the lead?
Well, that would be me, Mr. Mayor. So, good evening, Council members. Good evening, Mayor. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you this evening to discuss our 2021 work plan and our accomplishments as an Arts Commission. My name is Lynda McDermott and I am in my second term on the Arts Commission and I currently serve as Chair. I also serve on the Board of Directors for Lakeview Light and Power. You may recall that the development of a formal public art program was one of the key initiatives of the Arts Commission's 2020 work plan. This initiative was executed on time and was presented to City Council in July of 2020. The presentation encompassed research coordinated by the Arts Commission as well as the outcome of a public art charrette that was convened in February of 2020. The presentation encompassed, excuse me, the Public Art Program lays out a bold six-year plan to fund the installation of murals, utility box wraps, rotating art, interactive art, and iconic pieces. The aim being to enliven the city of Lakewood by making it a more beautiful place to live, work, and play. Although funding was not approved for the 2021 calendar year, the Arts Commission used the Public Art Program document as a guide for what we could accomplish on a constrained budget. The decision was made to pursue art installations like murals and signal box wraps as more conservative cost options. The benefit being that we would still be able to move forward, although on a smaller scale. And now we'll move into a discussion of some key elements of our 2021 work plan as well as our accomplishments.
Am I up next? Okay, I'm gonna go. Hi, my name's Sylvian Johnson. I'm a media production person and a recent new resident of Lakewood Community, which I'm happy to say. So this year's event was virtual due to COVID restrictions and I was given the privilege of creating, producing, along with many wonderful members of Lakewood Community, a 35-minute video celebrating Martin Luther King Jr. and his message of injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And I'm happy to say that the video was a great success. We had a keynote speaker who delivered not only a dynamic but poignant message impacting Lakewood Community and also across the nation as far as East Coast, because I sent it that far. It was a message to look inward on how we as individuals can work on making changes within ourselves and go forth in the community to make Lakewood a better place for all. We also had wonderful messages of the same call to action from Lakewood youth and community members. So this year, MLK Committee is discussing the idea of the Youth Mural. The World Lives in Lakewood as a theme in honor of Martin Luther King Jr. Lakewood Multicultural Coalition, led by Council Member Mary Moss, took the lead to implement the mural as a joint project with the city, Clover Park School District and the mural, sorry, and sponsors Pierce College Foundation and Clover Park Technical College. The mural was highlighted at the 25th anniversary celebration for the city. So we're in talks right now. In fact, we have a meeting this week to discuss how we're going to go forth with the MLK video for this year and it will be virtual again because of COVID. That's it for me. Thank you.
Should we ask questions? Are there questions or should we just jump into our?
I think you should just continue with your presentation and we'll do the questions at the end.
Perfect. Okay, I'm Lonnie Neal. I'm the next one up on, on the docket. My brief background is I am an industrial designer. I'm in product development, so I am an artist and I'm working on a graphic design degree as well right now. And I landed in Lakewood one year after Lakewood became a city. And because I was working in Olympia, my spouse was working in Tacoma, it was, this has been the perfect, I love Lakewood. I'm just gonna say that to all of you. I embrace this town and the city so much and I've been heavily involved with Clover Park School District, you know, on volunteering levels as a parent and I just, and I love being on the Arts Commission. I think I'm, I don't know how many years I've been on it and I thank you all for keeping me. So, that's my introduction to me. On the rotating art, we have had none because of COVID. So I wanna, if I can share my screen for a split second, we had, and I'm not gonna delve on this too much, but we had a wonderful retreat, which we'll tell you about a little bit later, but I want to, if I can share my screen, I just want to show you that I, I said maybe we should have the artwork that we did as the Arts Commission as a bonding unit be in the rotating art in the City Hall right now, because it's COVID and we really don't have a ton. But I would like to have Susan Warner pop in from Lakewood Gardens, because we, prior to COVID, we were working on a plan to bring in artists, have their work displayed both at City Hall and at Lakewood Gardens, which gives the artists exposure and Lakewood has been making some strides in that despite COVID.
Well, thank you, Lonnie. Indeed, indeed. This, I'm Susan Edie at Lakewood Gardens. And we, during COVID, we retrofitted the Lower Wagner House with beautiful track lighting so that we can light art correctly, correctly. And we're in process of actually putting together a schedule of exhibitions for 2022 that hopefully by the spring, maybe we can open the house and have art exhibitions again, but we are planning that. Otherwise, we're all virtual. So, thank you, Lonnie.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Mine, I am Earl Borgert and I have very strong ties to the community of Lakewood my whole entire life, in fact, and I'm honored that I've been able to strengthen those ties as being part of the Lakewood Arts Commission and now serving as the Vice Chair on the Lakewood Arts Commission as well. So this year, we did take up the project of selecting an artist to do some iconic pieces in our city that will definitely kind of help catapult our endeavors as far as the Arts Commission goes for the community. This year, the Arts Commission implemented a new process for selecting an artist. We used two public artist rosters and created a shortlist. Those interested submitted documents and portfolios and the top selected artists were invited to an onsite orientation that was hosted by many of the people on the Arts Commission. From there, it was narrowed down to one-hour interviews between these esteemed artists and the top three were paid a stipend to develop two design concepts. At the end, we had all agreed that artist John Fleming was selected for his two gateway arcs that will flank either side of Motor Avenue as people drive into the newly renovated Colonial Plaza that the city has given us. A contract has been signed and the estimated date of installation is summer of 2022 and this piece will incorporate a lot of different aspects within the community itself and I for one am cannot wait to see this. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to that this has given us. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you. And we go to Paige Hanson?
Yeah, I'm next. Hi, I'm Paige Hanson. And I wanted to introduce myself briefly. I've been proud to be on this commission. I started off helping out with the MLK Committee and it was just such a pleasure to be giving back to my community and I wanted to keep going. So when the opportunity came to be on the commission, I jumped at it. I'm now also on the board over at Lakewood Playhouse. I've been a Lakewood resident since 2001 when my husband and I bought our first and current home here. And currently, my job is a jazz DJ. I get to be a jazz DJ. I still finish myself at KNKX, but back then I was a news host there. Then our radio station was called KPLU. You might be aware, so. Just to share with you, I'm gonna talk about the Public Art Contest for Cities, the 25th anniversary that we just had. We had a new idea in light of COVID for a way to, for students to be involved and celebrate the anniversary. Was to give some themes. We chose to love Lakewood and unity. And we partnered with the Lakewood Sister Cities Organization. They reached out to Gimhee, South Korea. And there was a great turnout. The artwork was very moving and you may have seen it displayed. It was at the 25th anniversary event on September 25th and just beautiful, beautiful pieces and it really did sort of send home that message that the world lives in Lakewood. It was wonderful to be a part of that. So that's my part. I'll go ahead and pass it on now to Linda and Lua.
Actually, I think we're, Lua, you are up next.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Council, Honorable Council and Mr. Mayor. I'm very proud to say that I know all of you. And I've been working with a lot of you closely throughout the years. I myself have lived in the city of Lakewood for over 30 years now. But my Pritchard family has been in the city of Lakewood for almost 70 years. So you could say I have a, quite a bit of a heart for the city of Lakewood and I'm proud to serve on Lakewood Tacoma Arts, I mean Lakewood Arts Commission. But today, we want to talk to you about the Public Art Program and the roadmap that we've been following in 2021 and also for the future years. So the budget for the program was proposed to be a combination of McGavick Day Funds and general fund dollars that would equate to $1 per capita based on best practices. This recommendation increases the annual art budget from $15,000 to roughly $75,000 annually. The Arts Commission is really looking forward to the implementation of the signal box wraps and a mural in 2022 with the City Council approval of $30,000. And so we want to say thank you so much. In 2021, the Arts Commission was thrilled to implement one mural, a joint project lead by LMCC and, which is the Lakewood City Council and the School District, and four signal box wraps. The locations were Spring Brook, Bridgeport and 108, Silicon Boulevard and Lakewood Drive, and 84th and South Tacoma Way. And I might say I've seen some of them and they look really nice. But, and the artists were paid a $700 stipend. Linda?
I think we're over to Daryl and Lonnie now.
I think you just have me. I don't see Daryl here. So. All right, all of you, I hope you put up with me. So, um, I will read the script because I don't have all, is Daryl like, Daryl?
We had some technical difficulties. Go ahead, Lonnie.
No, well, that's all right. I was gonna introduce.
I'm willing to share with you, so go right ahead.
Well, I was gonna say that you, so Daryl worked really hard on putting a lineup together for the summer concerts and then COVID hit. So, you know, we all know. So that was an epic mess and, but that's what got replayed. Essentially, we, we had the lineup, we just had a delay for the, you know, a year delay to have that happen. So maybe, Daryl, you can talk a little bit about that and then I'll jump in and embellish, because it was fun.
I'd be happy to. Distinguished council persons, it's been an honor to serve on the, on the commission. I was very fortunate to be in a subcommittee with Patty Bell, Phil Rashkey, and Adriana Bayer, and we all collectively worked very hard to come up with a lineup in 2020, which of course, as we know, didn't happen. We were allocated some wonderful funds from the, from the lodging tax grant and in 2019, we were, we were actually allocated, excuse me, 6,000, which was up from the previous year in 2018. 2020 was to be our, our biggest year. We were, we were granted 20,000 and we basically decided to utilize that for 2021. So Lonnie's gonna help me with this. We're gonna just kind of go over the lineup that we had and I'm gonna go ahead and start on the, on the 15th of July. We had Night Wave, which is an 80s new wave band, and we had 340 wonderful people in attendance. Lonnie, you want to take the next one?
I, and I was one of those and I love it. Yeah, it was awesome. So on July 22nd, we had Good Co Swing, it was a stand-up. Good, sorry, say it again. So, and 350 people.
On, thank you, Lonnie. On the 29th of July, we had Kambalachi Salsa, which was an amazing group. I've heard them before and they thrilled the audience with their wonderful, wonderful rhythm and I think everyone enjoyed it. We had approximately 280, almost 300 in attendance for that one. Lonnie?
Yep, and on August 5th, we had Chris, the Chris Iger Band. I wasn't there, but it must have been epic because we had 450 in attendance that were counted. So.
Thank you. On August the 12th, we had Rock-a-Roki and there was a slight issue there with, with the smoke and heat of that day, but 165 people prevailed and, and had a wonderful time. So a testament to these citizens of Lakewood who were starved for entertainment. In spite of the elements, they braved and enjoyed the proceedings. Thanks.
Yeah, so then on the 19th of August, there was the Kim Archer Band that had 400 people in attendance. And then on the 26th of August, which was our last one, was a band called Victims of Love and they're, they're an Eagles tribute band and we had 230 in attendance. And I mean, I think to Daryl's point, it's people wanted to be out and be in the community and it was the one, I was only able to attend one event, but it was epic just to see how many people came, brought their chairs, you know, picnic blankets, brought food. There were food trucks. This is the kickoff of a great. We have a lot to build on here. It's gonna go big.
Lonnie, you said it all. I, I just want to kind of wrap up our portion with, the pavilion is amazing. The, the building doesn't come about without the broad participation of the citizens in Lakewood as well as organizations like Clover Park and, and the Rotary of Lakewood that contributed quite a bit to the, to the construction of the facility. It's just a wonderful, wonderful way to present the city and just to wrap things up, it's, to me, it's the culmination of, of a lifelong dream to be involved with the city and be, be a part of the arts, both music and, and art. And it's just wonderful to see it all come about. And I'm gonna retire my time. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thanks, Daryl. Our short film competition, Real Life 96, was postponed due to COVID. However, registration for this event is now scheduled to open on November 15th. And we anticipate having the actual screening of the short films in March of next year. So we're very excited to finally be able to move forward with this event.
Historically, we have a parade starting at Park Lodge Elementary School and ending at City Hall with the tree lighting and Candy Lane, Candy Cane Lane vendors, entertainment, and Santa visits. Last year, due to COVID, we implemented the reverse parade in Town Center with great success. Thousands of cars drove through. And on Saturday, December 12th, we had stationary floats while participants drove by and Santa was on the last floor with elves. And a lot of you City Council members, thank you so much. You were, you were there in the cold weather handing out goodie bags.
All right, this is Susan again from Lakewood Gardens and with my Lakewood Garden hat on, I'd like to thank the Council for their support. And I, I'm a curator and an educator and I've been the ED now at Lakewood Gardens for two and a half years. And it's such an honor to represent the gardens in the community. They are no longer such a secret garden and we are, we are welcoming many, many guests. So, of course, the Lakewood Arts Commission has an annual retreat and we held it at Lakewood Gardens on November 8th last year. It was quite chilly, but we were outside on the veranda and we had the heat lamps on, so we sort of stayed a little warm. We had a guest artist, Ian Williams, who's a stone carver and a veteran. And he was talking about how art heals and its relevance to today's community. It is in partnership with Creative Forces, which is a program at 11 military hospitals across the country. The Intrepid Spirits Center, right here in Lakewood, at Joint Base Lewis McCord, is part of this network at Madigan Army Medical Hospital. And this program, Creative Forces, is designed to help veterans overcome psychological conditions through art therapies. It's a very important program and we were very, very interested to see what Ian had to say because we are obviously here in Lakewood are very close to JBLM and the military community that we serve. And it was a great bonding experience for us all and we learned that some of us have unusual talents. And so that was very, very exciting to see and it was a beautiful setting. In addition, we've had two continuing education opportunities. We invited Kelly Pejat from Public Art Program at For Culture to come and do a virtual presentation for us. And Elizabeth Connor, who is a UW-T Arts Professor, multimedia public artist, also came. And we are really committed to this ongoing education because we want to be the best Arts Commission that ever was. So, thank you.
Okay, that, that's essentially our presentation for you. If you have questions that you would like to ask us.
Great. A busy group. Are there any questions from Council? Comments? Looking for those virtual hands. Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, great job, really. And you actually got things, quite a few things done in a, in a very difficult time and, and I do appreciate the passion that you, you go about this and I also appreciate the breadth of, of items that you're doing or activities you're, you're, you're doing, because I think that appeals to, to more people. I do want to ask some questions and, and one of them, should I, should I start off with the, it's a series of questions, about three of them, but I'll let you answer each one in succession. The first would be, and, and I think the Council is culpable, maybe more culpable in this, the, the amount of time it takes to turn a major piece of public art from, from a dream to fruition. And, and I appreciate your patience and, and your efforts in this piece that's gonna go in, in, on Motor Avenue in next year. But we have, this will be the third major piece of art. The Lotus Blossom being the other and I count the other one at the front of City Hall in what will now be 26 years of cityhood, which is about a little over, almost nine years per item. I think I've stated before that I'd like to speed that up. So do you think your new process will help and what other things can we do to try to move it along a little bit more quickly? And I'll let anybody answer that.
Answer that. We did so much research and worked very closely with the Tacoma public art staff. They have seven people on staff that just work on public art. I think that's one thing that really helps, so. I can't say that we have one specific professional person that that's their sole background is public art where they have, you know, seven people and that's their specialty. And it is a specialty. Secondly, it is never rarely shorter than a year's time from start to finish. That's, that's actually considered fast. So one year, and then of course the funding, at least $100,000 is what you're looking at for feet. So those would be the three pieces, I'd say.
Did, did it help to have that, to use the, the the mention was made that you use the roster from, I think, the state? Did that help and how did that help?
That helped tremendously because I in particular narrowed the list down from there. So it categories as all the artists that are on there. It has their resume and portfolios. So it's not just kind of a random fishing, fishing and seeing who responds. It's vetted. Every artist has been vetted and you can see their work and you can see specifically how it would relate and fit into the space and what you're going to have to art. It was tremendously helpful. And you can see the, the price point of the projects they work on.
Good. So then I'd, I'd like to move on then. I just, just a comment on the the wraps. It seems like everything has gone okay. You didn't mention any issues and hopefully nobody's graffitiing any of the wraps, which is one of the beauties of the wraps, that once you put the graffitiing any of the wraps, which is one of the beauties of the wraps, that once you put the art on, they tend not to want to do that. I I really think at the price point you're mentioning that in my mind, it's a very cost-effective way to do public art and to do beautification of those, of those areas. We don't have a lot of signal box, right, signal boxes to do, I think. But I would, I would really, I really do appreciate the efforts to date. And um, it's, it looks like you got some pretty good uh, ideas or or and and hopefully that can continue in the future. I don't know how many more boxes there are. Um, but I I, I think that's a good way and a very cost-effective way to do it. So my last, my other, my last question is um, the outdoor concerts, which I I I went to a couple of them and they went very well. It's really cool. I mean, people are out there dancing and stuff and and um, eclectic groups, you know, so what would you do differently or what what could we add or what would help to to continue those kind of keep growing those concerts? Are we good where we're at? Paige Hansen.
Yeah, I I I, Daryl, if you want to say something, I mean, as a, as one of the performing artists on the commission, you know, I feel very passionately about the performing arts. So I mean, we have that pavilion. My opinion is we should get as many concerts in there as we can when the weather permits because people go to the park. People go to the park even when it's not summertime. So, you know, but you gotta pay, you gotta pay artists, you gotta pay, you know, uh, bands and that sort of thing. So we want, we want our artists to be paid, right? So I'd say if we could get some more money in there, we could do some more concerts. What do you say?
Right. I mean, I mean, for what we pay per concert, is that Paige, is that, I mean, since you're a uh, since you're someone in the field, I mean, is that a, is that a competitive rate?
Yes, I direct a band and I'm in a couple other bands. And yeah, I'd say uh, definitely uh, you know, seven and eight hundred dollars gets you a band for a night. So let's, let's do it. Book them.
Thank you. Good. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The other, Ms. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Arts Commission. You guys have done a fabulous job. I just love the variety of things that you do. Um, it can be from the wraps to the movies that you're doing, just, I mean, just everything, the artist murals, you name it. So I really appreciate that. I love the low, um, the low-cost type of things like the wraps. So other things I think would be great. I'd love to see some sort of lighting installation somewhere. Um, illuminate under, you know, like the underpasses, the things like that. I don't know where they'd be, but I know that they're really a low-cost way. They also deter people from um, in to stay for a longer period in certain places. So I think that would be really cool and typically the cost isn't that much. And I am all for helping move along public art and making it go a little bit more expeditiously, like Councilmember Bochy said. So I love that. And another thing that I'd love to see was to incorporate possibly around the different months. Maybe February, maybe it's the October, the September, October Hispanic Heritage Month. Focus and highlight some different um, artists that would fall within those parameters. I think that that would be really cool to see diversity and highlight them. And it, maybe it's a performance artist, maybe it's an actual someone who paints something, maybe it's, you know, a different kind of art. Um, photography. I know that those things, because of COVID, things are a little bit more difficult, but I think that that'd be a great way to incorporate a little bit more diversity with art that we do in the city. But overall, I love what you guys do. You're all so creative, so very well-qualified, overly qualified. So thank you.
Mr. Brenstetter.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and a thank you to the to the commission for both all you do and for those of you that are here tonight. I do appreciate that. Uh, I just wanted to uh, follow up on one of Mr. Bulkey's comments about the the concerts and his question about uh, what more could we do or where where should we be going? And I would say that the concerts that I went to, one of the aspects of them that I greatly appreciated was that each of the bands that were on the nights that I was there strove to be very interactive with the audience. And I would tell you that 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 would be uh, something that I think we would want to encourage and look for performers that have that uh, repertoire uh, and 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 the ability to do that. And also that each of the concerts that I went to um, were uh, the audience was very multi-generational. There were um, lots of the ways that youth became engaged with the with the music and the performers to be able to go and do that. And and youth of a range of ages too. Um, so I I think that uh, uh, as we move forward and we develop and expand upon the concert series, I would not want to lose those aspects of what has been uh, successful uh, so far. And I would just comment on the wraps of that, the 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 four locations that have wraps. Uh, I am actually been glad to see that uh, um, none of them have attracted any graffiti. And I think that that stems to the fact that they are impressive in their own right and uh, um, and thus uh, being left alone. Anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I know you said it, but I missed it. Uh, was it Lua? Uh, what, what's the date on that Christmas parade that we're gonna have again this year? Me, Lua dropped off.
Here's December eleventh.
Eleventh?
And it's at Fort Stilicon Park. As a drive-through.
All right. Uh, any questions for council by the uh, members of the committee?
Um, I do. I uh, I had, I had made a note of uh, Councilmember Bell's uh, comments with regard to uh, lighting, underpasses and also with regard to celebrating the diversity of the community in certain key months throughout the year. But I was wondering if anyone else has any thoughts or ideas about things that um, perhaps we're not doing that we could be doing or maybe something that we should be doing more of?
Anyway, anyone on the council? You know, I you, you are spread in a number of different directions now, which is a good thing. I I'm amazed at the accomplishments that uh, a few thousand dollars will enable. Uh, I don't know that anyone here is uh, been on the committee long enough to remember when the budget was zero. Uh, and but I was on the council when that, when I came on the council, that was the case. Uh, first we found some uh, money through the McGavick rentals and then we've enhanced it. Uh, it's still a very modest amount and um, I don't know that uh, going down new avenues at this point would uh, would really uh, have a positive impact as as much as you need to focus on completion and begging for more money, your sponsorships, the Salmo Martinez help you with and um, and and the like on the things that you're doing because you're going in a number of laudable directions.
Okay.
Anyone else in council, any, any other questions from the folks on the committee? Don't see any hands. Well, thank you again for all you do. I know that this is a passion for you, you wouldn't be here. And uh, we really appreciate, oh, Paige is raising a real hand.
Paige, you're muted.
You're muted, Paige. Yeah, I I think we've got Silvy.
I raised my hand.
Okay.
Um, sorry to keep you a little bit longer. Thank you for allowing us to be here to chat with you about art and uh, what we can do for the city. Um, I had a question for you, um, because when I first moved to the area, I really kept on driving by the Colonial Plaza because of the lights, because they're so sparkly and they're so inviting, but there's nothing there. And so my question to the council is, um, would the city be willing to rent some spaces on Water Avenue to uh, transform into art galleries, um, to have art shows or and also a cafe to bring in people because where there's art, people usually want to have, you know, ca- a coffee or, you know, dessert dessert afterwards and it brings in revenue to the area. Um, I'm basing this on, because I'm in the art industry and I love going to art walks and art galleries. I've gone, I was raised in Arizona, so I I spent a lot of time in Scottsdale on the art blocks and it brings in so many people and it's so lively and really wonderful. And um, Scottsdale has really grown as an art community. And I think Lakewood has the potential to do that if, you know, that area is transformed because the hotel is right across the street and you have all this space um, for music, for art, for shows, for classes. It's, it, is it possible?
Well, anything's possible with money. I mean, we're, we're not the owners of the space.
Right.
Uh, we did uh, explore uh, a few years ago, we spent money on a study on uh, the potential uh, revival of the Lakewood Theater as a performing arts uh, area. Uh, we had uh, uh, major uh, performing arts uh, groups from uh, Pierce County look at that and we couldn't figure out a way to get to there from here. It 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 was so bad from a theater standpoint that it would be better to keep the facade, tear it down internally and rebuild it. That building was built in the nineteen thirties. It has nineteen thirty systems in it, very place.
Okay. Well, that spot would be a really great place for something like Jazz Alley in Seattle. I mean, it's a nice little spot.
Um, so, yeah, if if we had theomics of Scottsdale, Arizona's arts pa- art patrons, uh, I'm sure it would work. So there it's, it's tough. Uh, I'd like to see it too. I just, I don't know how we're gonna, we get there. So somebody comes up with a pro forma that has realistic potential, uh, I, I'm sure the city would be willing to partner, partner in it.
And what, and one smaller scale way to maybe sort of inch that direction, perhaps, Mayor, would be uh, to look at like the Space Works programs that they use in Tacoma where they utilize uh, empty spaces that aren't being used and they make a kind of like contract by contract with artists to utilize those spaces, artists that don't have a lot of money. And then they're able to create some art spaces. I don't know if you ever saw any shows in Tacoma that use Space Works, but it, it was pretty cool. I was in a dance group that used one and uh, was a way that we were able to get our dance out out there. So it's just one idea.
Okay, great. Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll mention, Don, I, you know, it was our hope when we invested in the Colonial Plaza that we would see some redevelopment of those, of those shops lying there. We haven't seen it. So hopefully coming out of the, this COVID pandemic that we'll see some investment there that will dovetail nicely with uh, I, what I'm hoping is more events because we're just coming off our our twenty-fifth anniversary celebration and I, and we all think it went very well. We got a good evening for it and and the space really seems to work. Um, it's just the right size for a certain style events. I I do want to dovetail on remarks that Councilmember Bell made about Hispanic Heritage Month, which runs September through October for various historical reasons. Um, we also have at the, I believe at the end of October, and I'm gonna destroy this, Das Murtoes or wouldn't deal Das Murtoes. And I, I mean, I think it's something we should investigate. I know the weather starts to turn uh, towards it by by that time in October, but um, I I I do think it's important, um, a plurality of our, of our, of our kids or students in the Clover Park School District are now Hispanic. Um, and and that represents a growing um, part of our population. And I think we need to, we need to recognize that. How that would work, I I don't know, but um, I I I certainly would w- w- would be in support of that. I know you get one thing more on your plate, as Dawn said, but I think we could look for help on that.
Um, I can the Colonial Plaza for, I submitted a lodging tax grant to have events there. And we're looking at having three to six events on the Colonial Plaza. Um, one of which I'm already planning with the school district for um, the Day of the Dead uh, in October of twenty twenty-two. So we actually are meeting this week to continue the planning of it. And we're meeting with some mothers who make the beautiful um, uh, frames for the altars. And it's gonna be really amazing.
Paige?
Hey, yeah, I just, I did want to also mention, I don't know if y'all um, were at the twenty-fifth anniversary event, but I wanted to share with you uh, my screen because I, it was a very cool event and my whole family went and we really enjoyed it. So if I can show you this picture, I think this will work. Can you see it?
No.
Oh, let me try it again. Here.
I think that
Do you see it? This was taken by Councilman, do you see it?
Yes.
Okay, this was taken by Councilman Jason Wayland of our family. And uh, they just had a blast. It was like the first time we got out in a long time uh, together as a family. If you can see back in the back there by the tents, there was just these Polynesian dancers. And my oldest son, uh, my sons go to the public schools here in Lakewood, but my oldest son uh, has special needs and he knows a lot of the council members. And so he just had a blast saying hi to everyone he knew. And uh, then we were sitting there kind of having a glass of wine and watching Michael Powers. And it was just such a testament that beautiful day, you know, you had the flag and the mountain was out and so many different cultures were represented there, um, thanks to Lua uh, who booked beautiful performing arts. And uh, it was just a wonderful time, especially coming out of COVID. I think we just were like, ah. And this uh, this young uh, man came up to our family, this young black man, and he introduced himself and he said, hey, I live in the neighborhood. We should have more of these events. This is really great. And I said, yes, it is. It's really wonderful. So um, I'll stop, stop the sheriff if I can. Um, but I also did want to, want to tell you all that what a wonderful event that was and how meaningful it was just as, you know, for my family to be part of that. And uh, and I wanted to uh, also mention something about the name of the Colonial Plaza. Um, we have received some messages from folks that that the term colonial has some negative connotations. And it feels like if 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 our, if our for city really is where the world lives, that maybe we ought to consider that maybe the name colonial or, you know, colonization, as it were, especially today. That we're, maybe maybe change the name, find something that would be a little more inclusive for our community. Would the council be willing to look at that possibly?
I think we're always way to, willing to consider things. You realize that that's in itself historical because it's a style of architecture. Uh, and that was the style of architecture that was built in the thirties and the first uh, ever Western United States shopping center. So uh, it, it, it isn't talking about colonization, it's talking about buildings, but I understand the concern.
Uh, just in terms of tourism and the Colonial Plaza, I did learn that Best Western sold out the night of that event.
Pardon?
Uh, Best Western, Best Western, uh, the Best Western Hotel sold out the night of the event of the twenty-fifth anniversary.
I I actually ended up in stance talking with the owner who introduced himself and he seemed very pleased with the activity. So I understand that now. Anyone else? Anyone else? Well, thank you, uh, and, uh, we will, uh, double your pay for next year and hope for bigger and better things. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you.
So now we move to, um, a review of the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two mid-bianium budget adjustment. And for this, we have Deputy City Manager Kraus.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So I'm sharing my screen at the twenty-one, twenty-two mid-bianium budget adjustment. And first of all, I want to just say that the proposed budget adjustment is in alignment with the city council's adopted financial policies. So if you look through the packet, you'll see that we do have quite a bit of one-time money to implement some of the council's goals. However, as you can also see in the fund summaries or the general fund ending fund balance, um, section that revenues and expenditures are pretty tight. We end up twenty twenty-two with an estimated one thousand three hundred and eight dollars of operating revenues over operating expenditures. So even though we have some programs that we're recommending, we still are taking some caution just due to the uncertainty, specifically as it relates to the supply chain. So I'll be coming back with a forecast at around November, end of November of this year. We'll also be following up with a another forecast after we close out the year, which will be towards the end of Q one twenty twenty-two or the early part of, uh, twenty twenty-two, so second quarter. So where I'm going to start is on page, uh, page six of your packet. Actually, I'll start off right here. So, whoops. So as part of the budget adjustment, I will be presenting some new, a couple new funds as well as a designation of funds. And that's included in this budget adjustment as well. We also have some items that we don't have incorporated in the budget adjustment. And that includes a couple of bargaining groups, which is the ASME as well as the Teamsters. I've included the, uh, L-Pig, which is the uh, Police Independent Guild in this budget adjustment. I've also kept some things that we, that you have seen in the past that includes the Transportation Benefit District where we're just keeping the monies there. Uh, transportation mitigation fees and hopefully to construct a traffic signal. We have the outstanding, potential outstanding abatement of the QFC. And then you heard about the Public Art, uh, program. That's kind of been out there for a number of years. We didn't incorporate it this year or this budget cycle, but we'll be looking at it in twenty-three and twenty-four. The municipal court will have new estimates, hopefully by the end of November, and that will be incorporated for the twenty twenty-two carry forward budget adjustment. You'll also be hearing, uh, on October twenty-fifth, we'll come back with a transportation, uh, CIP update. I've included some of the public, uh, works grants and their status. These are actually applications that have been submitted, but we're just awaiting. And then the Fleet and Equipment twenty twenty-two replacement reserves in the budget adjustment, we're asking to restore the twenty twenty-one replacement reserves. For twenty twenty-two, we'll wait and see how twenty twenty-one year-end, uh, finances are before we make a recommendation, if any. So skipping over to the general fund ending fund balance. So you're aware of the, the city council's twelve percent ending fund balance reserves. And, um, in the first table, you see that we have met our twelve percent ending fund balance reserves. We're also proposing to set aside one million dollars in twenty twenty-one for economic development opportunity and then increase that by another million dollars in twenty twenty-two. So that at the end of twenty twenty-two, we will have over five million dollars in ending fund balance reserves for the general fund. And a set aside of two million dollars for economic development opportunity. And then though, if estimates come in as projected, we should have one point six million dollars for the twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four biennial budget. That one point six million dollars would come in as a one-time source. As for the Economic Development Opportunity Fund, this would not be allocated, um, unless city council provides direction to do that. Um, at the bottom table is just the sources and, uh, sources and uses and ending fund balance for the general fund. Operating revenues in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two are either meeting or exceeding the operating expenditures. And then at the end of the year for twenty twenty-one, the estimate is nine point eight million dollars. And for twenty twenty-two, we estimate the general fund ending fund balance to be eight point six million dollars. And then there, the next section, uh, is a lot of information on the specifics of each of the budget adjustments. We made some adjustments to major revenue sources. Uh, that includes the property tax, which you'll see in the property tax, um, information that is coming up. We've seen, a- and you've received all of this information through the city manager's report. We've seen an increase in sales tax. And along with that is the park sales tax as well as the criminal justice sales tax. Admissions tax, we haven't seen revenues come in. And just due to the closures, we've had some. So we're making some reductions here to bring it to in line for what we anticipate the activity will be. Gambling tax has been strong and so we're making that increase to two point eight million and three million in twenty twenty-two. Liquor excise tax and liquor profits, this is based on the state's estimates, but again, that is just estimates still. Municipal court fines and forfeitures, we've been seeing decreases over the years. And so this puts us at where I believe we will be, uh, more realistic. And then photo infraction and fines, just increasing that by a hundred thousand in each year with schools being open. So I'm gonna skip over through all of the details on the cameras. Um, I, I think there is a lot of detail. So I'm going to skip over to the summary, which is a, a listing of the different, um, adjustments. So this is a little bit more in-depth than what had been, uh, what we've provided to the city council with the city council's strategic goals, um, council goals and objectives that were adopted for twenty-one to twenty-four. What we did is just take a quick stab at how we link each of these adjustments back to the city council goals, one of the six. And then tying it back to the objectives. So recognize that there are many objectives that could, or there may be multiple goals. Um, but this is not an all-inclusive. It's a work in progress and it'll continue to be. So we have, as you've seen, just the first section on the property tax estimates, we've identified what type of estimate or what type of adjustment it is, if it's a revenue, if it's a new, if it's a grant. Um, or if it's a continuation, and then you'll see that ARPA has a big section as well. So the total budget adjustment for all funds in twenty twenty-one is thirty point two million dollars. Expenditures of twenty-eight point six or twenty-eight point three million dollars. And then there's a smaller amount of adjustments for twenty twenty-two. I'm not going to go through all of these, uh, but I will point out just a few or several. So you'll see that we have some sustainability positions. We're proposing these as limited-term positions, starting on July one, twenty twenty-two. And, uh, you'll see the reason for that is we really want to take a look at where we end up twenty twenty-one before we start bringing people on. Uh, also another factor is just, uh, in terms of work plan when we compete, fit this function, uh, or this assignment in. You also see that permit technician is currently a limited-term position. That position is moving forward just because there is a need for that. The level of building activity is up. And we also have, uh, restoring a one point O FTE with the start date of July first, twenty twenty-two for the maintenance worker position. And I called it restoring because this is one of the positions that we did not fill as part of the twenty-one, twenty-two adopted budget. I'm incorporating the law enforcement, criminal justice legislative funding of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand that will be used for the one-time purchase of the cameras. And then I'll skip down. I've also identified the FTE increases as well. And so there's just over nine positions that, um, there is one that is ongoing, but also again, we're waiting to evaluate if that's something that is sustainable before we take action on it. Okay, so that is all of the general funds. The general fund is also providing some transfers to the Public Art Fund of thirty thousand dollars and that is for ten signal box wraps. It is also providing some transfers to support the transfer, Park CIP. And I believe that's about one point nine million dollars. So that completes the general fund. Moving on to the special revenue funds, the Street O and M Fund is primarily just, uh, internal service. It's actually all the internal service charges, uh, that are proposed in the internal service funds, specifically a big chunk of that is restoring the fleet and equipment resources as well as some technology needs. We're adjusting our lodging tax revenues by two hundred thousand to bring the revenue estimate to a million dollars based on what we have seen in activity. The Property Abatement Fund is requesting seventy-five thousand to enhance the rental housing safety program. And we've had the software for a number of years now, three or four years. I don't remember off the top of my head. But after using the system, there are some enhancements and features that if made will make the program more efficient. And, uh, so that's what we're proposing that for. Uh, the public art, I've already mentioned that the general fund would provide that funding of thirty thousand dollars. Narcotics seizure funds is re- receiving fourteen thousand five hundred dollars from Fleet and Equipment. And this is to be in compliance with what the use of narcotics funds are. So if we're using it for anything outside of narcotics, then we must reimburse the fund for that. We're incorporating a one point four million dollars from the North Clear Zone Grant from the Department of Commerce that's been approved. We also have some additional public safety grants, so no impact to the general fund. And then you'll see, starting with Fund One ninety-six, this is a new special revenue fund to account for all of the ARPA, uh, expenditures. And so we've broken them out to the different categories, um, for this grant and how, also how they relate to the city council goals. And so I'm going to skip over to the new request. We have new requests totaling two million one hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars. All of these items were presented to the city council. The city council did not take action on these, so they're not incorporated in the adopted ARPA ordinance. So we're requesting municipal court chambers, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And these all include the five percent admin fees. City council chambers for the dais expansion for social distancing, and that is a hundred and thirty-one thousand. Uh, HVAC cooler replacement system, uh, HVAC cooler system replacement at city hall for five hundred and twenty-five thousand. Hand washing stations at city parks without bathrooms at seventy-nine thousand. City halls based reorganization for the schematic design only at a hundred and five thousand. Lakewood Police Department retention is six hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And Tacoma Pro-Bono Housing Justice Program for four hundred and seventy-three thousand. So these are incorporated in the proposed budget adjustment. Along with this is some narrative that describes what these, uh, programs are about. And that was, um, earlier in this packet. We are, we have monies that we are proposing to, uh, pay down on the LID debt service and also make some adjustments to the revenue expectations for the assessments. The Park CIP program, we have a number of programs where we're requesting general fund. Uh, Chambers Creek, we have the new estimates, um, for that. And so we're short by five hundred and twelve thousand. We're requesting to make that um, request for bridges. One, the bridge and paths. And then we currently have a Park CIP support position, which the city council allocated fifty thousand dollars going back a number of years. But what they really need is a limited-term position to complete the projects. So there is over ten million dollars in grants that they'll be uh, managing and, um, having this position will help with the process or the project along. We're adding Ward's Lake, which is funded by grants to all disabilities playground, twenty-three thousand from general fund. Um, I'm not gonna go through all of these as I've identified where the funding sources are. Um, so for example, American Lake Parks improvements, we're just shifting when we're actually receiving the grants, taking off one year, adding to another and then so, uh, adding additional amounts for this project as well. On the transportation CIP side, we're also increasing revenues and expenditures by one point two million and one point seven million in the following year. And most of these are really outside sources, which with some, uh, contributions from the REIT fund. So for example, the, uh, the first one is all grant funded. The second piece is the Clover Park High School uh, grant, hundred and twelfth to Clover Park High School. And that's a grant of six hundred and fifty-six thousand. We needed eighty-seven thousand, so REIT is the proposed source. We've got one million one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars for the uh, Washington Boulevard, but that's being funded by Lakewood Water District and we're doing that just because, uh, it's in conjunction with the project. And then we have a couple grants, um, for hundred and twelfth to Lakes High School. And that's really just identify, it's more housekeeping that we've received the grant and not anticipated. Then we're getting the Pine Street sidewalk and pedestrian crossing. Eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollar grant requiring eighty-six thousand dollars from the real estate excise tax fund. You've also seen in the last report by the city manager, our real estate excise tax has just been phenomenal. So we are increasing the estimate by one point seven million dollars, uh, in twenty twenty-one. We're not doing anything with twenty twenty-two because these really are considered one-time. And then we're making those two transfers that I mentioned for transportation CIP. Sewer availability charge, we're making a, an adjustment to increase the revenues because we have, uh, sewer projects that were completed in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. So this is an increase in what the revenues will be. We also collected sewer availability from collections from Rowan Apartments and that amounted out to two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So just recognizing that revenue as well and it'll just flow into ending fund balance provides additional funding for sewer projects. The surface water management fees, just taking a look at what the revenues, um, expectations are based on prior year's closing and applying the growth that is in the ordinance. We're canceling a project, uh, this hundred and twelfth street storm drainage, restoring fleet and equipment for twenty twenty-one. And then they also get a share of the internal service charges primarily, um, the biggest ones are for technology. And then going to the internal service funds, we have fleet and equipment restoring a total of about nine hundred and eight thousand dollars. We have a new program request for the public address microphones to, um, due to the legislative mandated training. We're replacing a vehicle that just got missed in the carry forward budget adjustment. So we're adding that request here and it's funded by replacement resource and insurance proceeds. We have a request for a new, uh, lieutenant vehicle and I, I apologize, I skipped over that one. So the police department is requesting a new lieutenant. And that position would also start on Janu- or July first, twenty twenty-two. But along with that is a request for a new vehicle. And then Parks Department is asking for a new, uh, mower for the lands- street landscape program and that mower is twelve thousand dollars. We also have some property, uh, maintenance. And the first one is a security system repairs for the Street O and M shop that really needs to be done. Uh, then we have the sound transit elevator repair, which the city owns. And so we're requesting sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. The caretaker house, you've approved some items for, uh, repairs, but this is another area that needs to be. The caretaker house, you've approved some items for repairs, but this is another area that needs to be taken care of. Information Technology, you'll see again, the rental housing software enhancements, a minor amount for website translation services. The changes to the website are included in the ARPA funding, but this is the ongoing maintenance portion of it. We had to replace a radio antenna so that communications could occur with the police department. And then we have a request for city council laptops to replace the iPads. And due to all the public records request, the cybersecurity and the projects that we have going on, we're requesting an IT analyst again to evaluate where we are at year end before we hire for the position. There are a number of infrastructure for IT that is needed, upgrading the Microsoft Exchange Server and licenses. We also have related to the Microsoft Exchange emails is the Enterprise Vault. We also have large amounts for co-location and the ongoing cost for that. And then with the Zoom meetings, we need to get our annual license updated. WCIA provided an assessment figure for twenty twenty two, and that's going to increase by ninety six thousand one hundred dollars. But also, it's not just what the activity that has occurred for the city, but just overall insurance is just more costly. I've also provided an update on what this budget adjustment would look like if we had plugged these all in. Some of the account numbers will change, but this gives you a general overall picture of the major categories. And like I said, we end up here with the operating expenditures of one thousand three hundred and eight. So this is our operating income, very tight, but we'll still be cautious before implementing any of the requests. So that concludes my presentation. I've attached the draft ordinance and what the funds will look like if the city council were to approve it. And so here is where we would be at twenty twenty one. If everything went as planned, we'd end up the year with twenty six million dollars, but that is comprised of nine point eight million dollars in the general funds, some of which will be drawn down for twenty twenty two, and then we'll still have some set aside for the twenty three and twenty four budget as we get into twenty twenty two. And for the hotel motel lodging tax, we're going to be adjusting that based on what the city council approves, and then if there's any carry-forward, or actually, there probably won't be any carry-forward because there were no capital projects for the city. And hopefully, the gateway got finished. And then Transportation Benefit District, we haven't spent those monies. We're setting those aside for council decision if we're going to be issuing any bonds. And then of that twenty six million, we've got four point nine million in fleet and equipment reserves at the end of twenty twenty one. So that concludes my presentation on the budget adjustment. I did also add the Lakewood City Council goal so that if you're interested in tracing them back to each of the programs that we've requested, you can see what the specific objectives that fall under the goals. So that's all that I have.
So Ms. Kraus, when do you propose to have this agendized?
And this is going to public hearing on November first, and then city council approval, consideration and approval on November fifteenth at the regular council meeting.
Questions from Ms. Kraus? There's a lot to digest here. Can't see everybody. Mr. Brandstetter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Kraus, I have some questions about the ARPA elements that are here. That the ARPA expenditures are listed and, starting on page nineteen of our packet, there is a group of them that are categorized as programs the city council approved on September twenty twenty one via ordinance number seven fifty nine. And as I go through those, I then come to the fact that included in that list is the Lakewood Boys and Girls Club Teen Engagement and Mental Health Support program for two hundred and thirty seven thousand three hundred and four. And a YMCA allocation for one thousand, one million, seven hundred and seventy nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Now, when the council considered Ordinance seven fifty nine and came up with in September on items to be approved, we amended the original ordinance that was proposed to delete from Exhibit C, which was the list of initial ARPA expenditures being approved. The amendment was to delete from that list all the items that didn't have a yes in the action column. So, and the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA should have been deleted from that approved list. Discussion was, we just didn't know enough about those programs and what they were proposed. So I was surprised to see them in this category as if the council had already approved them. I did go and look at the ordinance, and I found that even though we did make that amendment, that that amendment was not applied to the ordinance and that the ordinance was published with those two items still on Exhibit C. And so I don't know exactly how to reconcile that, but I have concerns about those two programs from primarily because I don't know really what they are and how they're proposed. They're five-year programs, and how are they not ongoing operational costs? And we've had some nothing that was really clear, particularly with the YMCA programs, of how they would impact the four zones that we've been encouraged to impact in Springbrook, Pilikum, Lakeview, and Montevista. So, I guess I'm not in favor of including those into the carry-forward budget at this time lacking enough information for council to discuss, understand, and decide to move forward with them, particularly given the recent presentation that we had that showed that actually activities for youth are actually a lot more prevalent than was perceived back a while. And also, the input that indicates that it's not so much that there are programs, but that the issue is that youth have a transportation issue with being able to get to them, and it's not clear how either of these two programs are going to going to address that. So you know, I guess that if we were to take these two programs out of the approval of the interim over there, those ARPA dollars would still be there, and we could use a process similar to what we did with Ordinance seven fifty nine to approve them in all or in part going forward, rather than making them a part of this adjustment. Is that an option?
Well, I would like to invite, I have a similar concern, but to put it much more succinctly, I'd like to invite council's comments or thoughts with respect to carving out all the ARPA expenditures and having them considered as a separate ordinance and treating the other budget adjustments as we normally would. ARPA is a unique circumstance, and we, I feel uncomfortable burying a small but still laundry list of ARPA expenditures inside the larger action when we have had discussions that we wanted to delay some of those because we have an additional period of time to obligate ARPA funds.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would certainly be much more comfortable with that approach than burying them in the mid-biennial budget adjustment.
Ms. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Heidi Walker. And as the discussion was unfolding, I have conferred with the city clerk, and we erred in publishing the Exhibit C without legislative enactment. And as you can imagine, what we publish does not prevail over what action the council took. The council took the action to amend those items. To the degree that others have relied on what was published to their detriment, that's on us for publishing a document that they relied on. But Councilmember Brandstetter is correct, and the clerk has double-checked it. And so I just want to make sure the council's aware that our interpretation legally is what you do on Monday nights is what carries the day. And to the degree that we erred in our publication, I apologize for that.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Other council members, before we move on, any thoughts on the, including the ARPA funding in this ordinance?
I agree with your suggestion, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, I agree. I think that the ARPA amount is such a large amount, and we need to be very strategic about it. I would agree with that.
I also agree, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I'm in agreement, Mr. Mayor.
So Waylon doesn't have a say. We'll carve it out.
So just so that I understand, is the city council wanting to take out the whole ARPA entirely, or just those two programs?
I think we want to consider ARPA expenditures outside the budget adjustment as separate budgeting items, so that we can discuss the merits of the relative programs strategically, and council can decide where those want to go, rather, where they want that to go, rather than have them included and then be focusing, instead of on the biennial budget adjustments, focusing on individual suggested ARPA expenditures. Just segregate them out, treat them separately.
Okay, so if I could, for budget ordinance purposes, I would recommend, and city manager will step in if I incorrect, but I would recommend budgeting just the lump sum item to be allocated and not have any specific programs in here other than for the comfort in that we know that we're going to be making that contribution this year. What I don't want to err on is not having any budget authorized in the fund and then come up with the audit issue because we didn't budget it, but we've spent. So what we could do is just put in the ARPA award and have it unallocated at this time to be determined by the city council.
Uh, Tom, Councilor Broke here. But we've already spent some, so what page should we be looking at?
We're on page twenty one of the packet.
Mr. Caulfield. Thank you, Mayor. Just to echo off of Ms. Kraus's comment there. So first of all, she's right, budget authority is needed, and budget authority needs to be put in place for this account by December thirty first of two thousand twenty one. My recommendation would be a little different from Ms. Kraus's, which would be to have a separate standalone budget ordinance for ARPA outlining and illustrating each of those respective programs, so that council's direction is adequately accounted for, but also, at the same time, budget authority is provided as well.
Thank you. A reasonable way to get there. Any other questions from Ms. Kraus? And I have one other one. Because I'm a little bit unclear on set aside versus ending balance. If there isn't spending authority, what's the difference between set aside and ending balance?
So the set aside is actually within the ending fund balance. It's basically an earmark of the ending fund balance, so we're holding that in the pot within the general fund, but not allocating it because we don't have a specific program for it necessarily.
So it's in the ending fund balance, not separate?
Yes.
Okay.
And what's the plan when we'll be talking about that opportunity fund?
So you're going to see, the third item that I have is the new funds, and in that there is an idea, and, but it wouldn't be adopted as part, that idea isn't adopted as part of this opportunity fund. It is used as an example of what the city council could do. Just one of the things that the city council could do. When it'll come back to the city council, I'm going to turn that to the city manager.
And so just to be clear, if we get to the end of the year and the revenues are even better than your conservative estimates, we can, of course, do a supplemental budget for our favorite program or project, I should say, one time.
Yes, the city council could do budget adjustments at any time throughout the year, but given the city council's city council's schedule, you have only a couple meetings in December after this budget adjustment is adopted. We could also look at it as part of the twenty twenty two carry-forward after the books are closed and incorporate that as part of that process. Or you could do it even earlier, and then we just grab it as part of the formality of having an adopted budget by ordinance.
All right. Double-checking for, with the screen share, I can't see everybody at one time here, so I'm checking for raised hands. Anything further before we move on? Council, not seeing any, so thanks, Ms. Kraus. And your next item on the agenda is a review of the twenty twenty two property tax levy?
Yes. So overall, with the property tax levy, our property tax, well, let me start off with IPD. So the implicit price deflator has come in between where we were in two thousand eight as well as two thousand six. So implicit price deflator is three point eight six, so it's above the one percent, which means the city council can increase the property taxes by one percent as authorized by state law. We don't have to come back and do any type of substantial need. So the last time our implicit price deflator was this high was in two thousand six, a three point four percent, and just slightly lower than two thousand eight, a four point five percent. So in twenty twenty one, the assessed value was eight point one million. And I'm sorry, I'm on page eighty-two of the packet.
I think you said million. It's a billion, right?
Oh, billion, yes. Not used to dealing with so much money or numbers. So eight point two, eight point one billion, and in twenty twenty two, the assessed value is nine point three, nine point four billion dollars. That's an increase of one point three billion or That's an increase of one point three billion or fifteen point eight cents, eight percent in our assessed value. So as assessed value increases, the city's levy rate decreases. So if the city council were to approve a one percent um increase as the city council had done in the past, uh going back as far as I could find in two thousand six, the levy rate actually decreases from point nine, from ninety-one cents uh per thousand to eighty-one cents per thousand. And the city's property tax levy increases from seven point four million dollars to seven point six million. So this is the calculation for the um property tax levy. We're starting off with the base levy amount of seven point four million, a one percent increase is seventy-four thousand. New construction uh amount, the the levy is a hundred and seventeen thousand. And then we have some administrative refunds of eight mil, eight thousand one hundred fifty-six. So that comes out to seven point six million or yes, seven point six million and then adding about a thousand dollars for the estimate for the state assessed values. So that brings us to the preliminary levy of seven point six million. The twenty twenty-one and twenty-two adopted budget assumes a one percent uh levy increase. And adopting this one percent based on the levies levy rates and such actually increases the estimate by about ninety-six thousand dollars, which was what I included in the mid biennial budget adjustment. So if the city council, so this is taking a look at the average home in twenty twenty-one, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand. The average value, um, the value of an average home is increased to four hundred and forty-four thousand. So that's a sixty-five thousand dollar increase in assessed value. And and the city's levy rate, you'll see that we're going from ninety-one cents per thousand to eighty-one cents per thousand. Based on this information, the average homeowner for twenty twenty-one property tax paid three hundred and forty-six dollars for the city's portion. And with a no increase, if the city council did not increase, it would be a three hundred and fifty-six dollars. And then with a one percent, which is what we're recommending, the average taxpayer would pay just about three hundred and sixty dollars. So the difference between the city council not enacting a one percent increase versus enacting a one percent increase is three dollars and fifty cents. So the options that the city council has is to levy the property tax without any increase or increase the property tax by one percent, which is consistent with what we had estimated for the twenty-one and twenty-two budget. And here's just a recap of what that would look like um under the different options. Option one, no increase and option two, which is what we're recommending. So the next step for this is to have a public hearing as required by state law on November first, followed by council consideration for adoption on November fifteenth. So that concludes my presentation on property tax.
Any questions from Ms. Kraus, property tax? Mr. Branstad.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Kraus, from time to time, uh, we have discussed the uh the balance in the terms of the total property tax we collect between residential and commercial properties. Uh, and there, you know, there, there was a time of when oh, our balance was different from other communities in that the residential was carrying the greatest amount of that, but is, is, is that shifting any um?
Can you all see my screen still? Yes, right? Okay, so I do have a table for taxable values, commercial versus residential. And commercial has been uh anywhere in the range of thirty-three percent of the total taxable values. Um, in twenty twenty, it was thirty-nine percent of the taxable values, twenty twenty-one, thirty-eight percent. And in twenty twenty-two, the preliminary number is thirty-seven percent. So relatively the same, but um you can see a slight decrease in the past couple of years, few years.
So do do professionals like yourself have a uh a target for this sort of uh of a of a figure as to what, what, what is a healthy uh uh balance between commercial and residential?
So as a professional for myself, I have not looked at it as what is a good balance for the city. I primarily am just reporting uh the composition.
Hi, um, City Manager John here. Could I just jump in real quick? Um, actually, a um an appropriate mix here in Lakewood, given our makeup, would be sixty forty. So it would be sixty percent commercial, forty percent residential. And as you can see, we're kind of flip-flopped the other the other way. So in a perfect world, that's the way it would be. And what that shows is that there still continues to be very underdeveloped and underutilized commercially zoned uh properties in, 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 in Lakewood.
So what it with if, as we strive to develop mixed-use properties, uh, dude, is that generally how they would get assessed?
That's, 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 that's correct, Councilmember Branstad, or as we, as we transition to a more urban environment. Um, that's exactly what would happen. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Then you're still in the hot seat, Ms. Kraus, as we move to a review of the creation of new funds and designations of funds.
So you saw a little bit of this in the budget adjustment, I think it was on page two. But just creating a fund for the American Rescue Plan Act, this is highly recommended and is most appropriate given the level of tracking that we need to do and for reporting purposes. So I'm making that recommendation um to implement this fund in twenty twenty-one. Real estate excise tax, we currently account for it as a special revenue fund. I think the most appropriate thing to do is to account for it as a capital project fund. I really don't want to take the risk of being called out on it. I'd rather be proactive and move it as a um capital project fund. So really, this is just re-designating the current fund, which is a special revenue, to a capital project fund since it's all being used for capital purposes and debt service, but that is also related to capital. And then the Economic Development Opportunity Fund, this is as and we talked about, is a designation within the general fund for the purpose of providing economic development opportunities. And so in the ordinance itself, you'll see that the program or this fund, this opportunity fund within the general fund could be used for a small business growth revolving uh fund loan. And our uh Economic Development Manager had provided some information on what that would look like. So as an example, it's been incorporated in the ordinance as well. So this is going to the city council on November fifteenth for consideration and adoption. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Questions from Ms. Kraus on the subject? Not seeing any. We will then move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Uh, just three things um this evening. The first is uh just as a follow-up to the budget ordinance discussion. So um since it's my understanding that the council would like to consider the ARPA budget appropriation separate and distinct from the mid biennial budget ordinance. What I'd like to do is bring that back for your review. Um, perhaps next, next Monday, October eighteenth, but if not October eighteenth, certainly October twenty-fifth. So you would then have essentially two budget ordinances. You would have your mid biennial budget ordinance, then you would have your standalone ARPA budget ordinance as well. Because again, in order to s- to to spend the ARPA funds, um, you do need to have a budget appropriation in place by the end of the year.
Uh, just as, as to those dates, uh, I was saving for council comments. I will not, I will be in Boston next Monday and I'm unlikely to be able to participate. And Mr. Wayland is also doubtful in that he's in Europe. So the twenty-fifth might be a better choice.
I'm out the twenty-fifth. Unfortunately, I'll be up on a plane. Um, I can have conversations, I suppose. We'll figure it out.
Or we can uh wait until uh November and December and do it. If if that's, if that's the case, um, I I need to err on the side of, of uh of uh I think the only thing, I I wouldn't feel comfortable spending too much of this ARPA monies until, you know, I knew there was going to be an ordinance that would, you know, that the council would consider and pass so that legally the monies can be spent before the end of the year.
Well, we might be able to to do a blank check ordinance uh without specific uh ca- by categories, perhaps?
Well, we, Mr. Mayor, we've already, we've already agreed on most several million, right?
Correct.
I mean, the the comfort, I I mean, how, we're only talking about what we got this year, which is the what? How much was the amount?
Six something.
Half is, yeah, half of thirteen.
So yeah, I, and we've already spent some of it. We did the one percent, the Warriors Have Change. We're gonna do the bike park and then we do have to agree on a total amount that's gonna go into the general fund to pay for those one-time things. The Habitat Boat Street Project. I think this rebuilding South Sound. I don't know what the total is there, but I'll have to play with that, but I think we're just I mean, you start with those that we've already agreed on. I think there's some that we haven't agreed on that I don't know that we're going to agree on before the end of the year, which is that this sounds like the Boys and Girls Club and the, and the Y. I mean, is that what you're hearing?
Yeah, my, my, my rec- my, my recommendation, first and foremost, from a financial standpoint, is that the total amount of ARPA funds of thirteen point eight million dollars be budgeted as revenues. And then, as Councilmember Boki pointed out, um, Ordinance seven fifty-nine, the council did provide specific direction that those are the programs we can move forward with. And, you know, we, we have those itemized and we know what those are. However, there are other items that I've recommended as well as part of the mid biennial budget ordinance. And if the council doesn't wish to consider those, that's fine. And uh, or if you wanted to wait until twenty twenty-two. But at the same time, you know, during the previous discussions on the ARPA funds, the council, you know, did communicate to me that if, if, if I had recommendations on the use of those ARPA funds, particularly the revenue replacement, is to bring those forward. And so that's what I'm doing as part of the mid biennial budget review. But again, if the council wants to create a bright line between the ARPA funds and the, you know, the, you know, the, the city's budget, you know, non-ARPA budget, if you will. Um, I, I, I think that can be best handled with two separate distinct budget ordinances.
Okay. Mr. Branstad.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, you know, I, 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 I do think we could move forward with an ARPA budget ordinance that mirrors what we approved in Ordinance seven fifty-nine and then have before the end of the year, the study session to consider things that are in addition to, to what we uh uh approved as initial expenditures in seven fifty-nine uh uh more broadly. And so there may be an ordinance that is rather sim- can simplistically be constructed around the seven fifty-nine decision. And then we can go into the what's beyond that in terms of having some presentations and discussion.
Well, that can be very easily provided to you in the next couple of meetings.
Yeah, I think that'd work.
And then Mayor, and then Mayor and Council, is there any objection to scheduling time later on in November and December to talk about other recommended ARPA uses, including Boys and Girls and YMCA, once we have information from them?
No. I, I, I'm not, I haven't heard any. Speak up if, if anybody does. All right. Back to you, Mr. Caulfield.
Okay, so, okay, I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor. So you don't want me to bring back any other, other than the seven fifty-nine? You don't want me to bring back any other recommended uses of ARPA funds in two thousand twenty-one?
Yes, uh, but the new rec- the recommendation, I think the thought is to have those recommendations that considered outside of the biennial budget adjustment, not to not bring them forward.
Understood, yeah, understood. And what I was, yeah. And what I was suggesting was to do that maybe in the latter part of November, early December.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the only other um two items that I had, Mayor and Council, was um the city council, you've received two proclamation requests. Uh, the first is to um issue a proclamation declaring October as National Disability Awareness Month. And I believe we, um, the city clerk forwarded that to you. And then also um the city council received a request for a proclamation declaring October twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one as Community Conflict Resolution Day, which comes from the uh Center for Dialogue and Resolution, which is located in um downtown Tacoma. They're, you know, they're a great resource for folks who have, you know, civil disputes and things, things along those lines. If, if the, if the council's so inclined um to move forward with these proclamations, um, they can be placed on your, on your next regular meeting, which is a week from today, October eighteenth. So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Right. Any questions for Mr. Caulfield? I see none. Go to council comments. Ms. Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry about that delay there. Uh, the only thing I have to report is that on Saturday, I did the walk and making strides to against breast cancer for the Southwest Washington and LMCC was on uh television. So I understand that uh when that happens, the person needs to provide goodies. And I had goodies tip for you guys tonight.
Thanks for the virtual treats.
You bet. Thank you.
Mr. Branstad.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would say that I did get a chance to go by the uh uh, the uh the Fab Festival at the McGavick Center uh that was uh o- over the weekend. Uh, it was uh there, there, there's a, there is a steady stream of people attending, even if it was, if, 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 if it wasn't uh uh a, a lot of people. But in talking with the folks who were there, who were vendors and dis- and, and persons displaying things, uh, they were very complimentary about the fact that it was even happening in this uh day and age, uh, and at how well organized it was and how uh uh both how welcoming uh the folks putting it on uh were as well as uh the, the camaraderie among everyone who was there looking to, to do that. And, and there was a, a lot of the, you know, interesting things to see uh the, the two uh go on to do that. Uh, that uh and uh the uh I did get a chance to uh attend uh the uh assumption of command of uh of, of, of the current Corps Commander Re and uh inventing himself as a three-star. Uh, that was a, a, you know, a, 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 a good ceremony to do and the, the uh, and actually, the, the, the remarks uh were uh were, were, were very well received and I particularly would want to talk about the fact that in the uh the uh uh discussion about describing JBLM as a force projection platform, they discussed that it is a place they discuss that it is a place that, an installation that projects our national interests internationally, but also that, that it, there is a forced projection into the local communities. And that that was the leadership there considers that an essential element of the force protection mission that they have. And that was, I think, the, really appreciative of doing that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have much to report, except via some friends who were able to go to the Truck and Tractor event and said it was wonderful. They loved it, their children loved it. And please, please, please do it again, is all I heard. So thank you to the staff that put that on and the community for going. It was awesome.
Ms. Farmer.
Been spending a lot of time with the Sex Offender Policy Board for the past couple of months. We are, I am super, super impressed with the, with this group. It's a wide ranging, diverse group of professionals who are following up on some of the legislation that we managed to get passed last session. And we're working on ways to reduce red tape, to increase funding, to increase treatment provider opportunities, and, and to basically make our communities safer in addition to, to making sure that folks who have gone through their rehabilitation can find a, a safe, welcoming place to live and, and get their treatment as they transition back into the community. So looking to produce another report for the, for the legislature and hoping to see a draft. I think it's, I think it's next week, so a lot going on there. And I had my orientation for the SHAPE Executive Board on Monday, and that went really well. And it's super organized, they're, they're onboarding each of us individually, or in small groups. And then the first meeting is next Monday, and they, they are hitting the ground running. There are, this group, obviously, Mr. Mayor, you've been, you've been a part of this since the beginning. I'm super, again, I'm super impressed by, they're taking their deadline very seriously. They have two years. They've given themselves a deadline, which we all here at the council have said, you know, if you're not gonna show some results, then, then you're out. So they're taking that very seriously, which I very much appreciate. So two years, they've got two years to get something done, which means that we're hitting the ground running with taking some action on the, on the very first meeting. So, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important to note that, while Lakewood was the, the municipality that added that as an emphasis, but was also the first one to adopt the ILA. So we're all in, but we want accountability. So, thanks. Ms. Roboki.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things I noted when we were talking about the property tax changes. The, the amount of new construction that's going on, which was in excess of a hundred million dollars, which is just incredible for this community. And we've waited a long time for that, because I, I can remember when it first got started in twenty twelve, and the amount was almost nothing. I mean, it was really coming out of the recession, was not very high at all. And really nice to see a six-figure number up there that I think is really appropriate for a city our size. And my thanks to the Arts Commission, I mean, just that they're the epitome, and I think there's several committees out there that are really the epitome of people who just love their work and do a really good job and have tons to do and willingly take that tons to do on. And I just really am proud of them and their work and, and their enthusiasm. And then I stopped by Truck and Tractor Day, and I have to tell you, I just walked through. If you've ever had kids, the genius is in the simple things. And I told Mary Dodsworth, the genius of having, you have all those trucks, you have some tractors, and you got the hayride, which is very popular. But the genius thing I saw that day was two big piles of kind of sand, dirt, sand kind of thing, with tonka trucks on them. And those kids were like ants on those things, and they were having the times of their lives. The parents could just stand there and watch them pour these things uphill. It was genius. I just thought, wow, what a great idea. And it's the simple things, right, that the, the kids like. So I think it went off very well. I, I hope everyone was very pleased with it. The pumpkin shooting thing, you know, there's things to entertain adults too. And then, and then the new playground, of course, because you had all those kids. There were tons of kids at the playground, playing on the new stuff especially. So just a really good day for the park and for Truck and Tractor Day. And I'd like the city manager to, you know, carry those thoughts back to the staff that they did. They just did one heck of a job. So with that, that's all I've got to say. Thanks.
Thank you. So for, last week on the fifth, I participated in a mayor's forum held by Congresswoman Strickland. I, one thing I noted in to some of the questions is that I think our council is much more in tune with legislative activities and some other municipalities, varies widely. But especially when it comes to JBLM, and I, it's good to see that the Congresswoman is focused on the well-being of families of the soldiers. And so it's, it's, I think it went really well. On the sixth, like Mr. Branstad, I attended the Assumption of Command for now Lieutenant General Xavier Brunson, who I've had the pleasure of meeting on any number of occasions in the past. I think it's a great selection, great leader. Yeah, the comment that stuck with me is that it's the first time he's heard of a ceremony celebrating somebody getting to keep his job. He's been acting for six months, I believe. They were away, and the General Garrett, who installed him, I guess, made a kind of off the cuff remark about, he appreciates the civilian leadership of political leadership, having a say in basically who becomes a general. But it indicated, you know, the selection had been made a long time ago, had to go through the Senate process. That didn't get done until the end of September, I don't think. Having coffee with the mayor tomorrow. Judge Mansfield will be the speaker. And I won't be here next Monday, as I indicated, because I'm gonna be in Boston. If I have any extra time, I'm gonna do a background check on a certain city manager.
Mayor, my juvenile records.
They're sealed, I know it. The wedge didn't burn. Anything else to come before the council? We'll see you next time.